Danita.
Yeah.
Without LVC3 and the people who started it, Rick, Pam, Kathy, Joe, and all of the group here, Hannah, Danita, this wouldn't have happened. We wouldn't be where we're at right now. We wouldn't have a functioning, extremely well-functioning fire department. We wouldn't have a new city manager coming on board. Changes are occurring in the city, and they're changing quickly. You know, and there's still, there's still things to be, you know, worked on. It always, it's, you know, it's been a running machine for the same way for many, many years, as we all know. And when I first got on council in 2015, it's like, "Well, we've always done it that way." Well, that's not an excuse. This is what you're doing, and it's not right, you know. But I just want to thank everybody. And I'm not here to fight and argue. I'm just here to try to answer questions I can. But without LVC3 and without our fight, we would not be where we're at right now. And our city's in a much better spot financially. We have a functioning three fire department stations, which is incredible. We have a new automatic aid agreement with the County of Los Angeles, which is a first of its kind. The structure fire just down the street on Emerald the other day.
Baseline.
Baseline, yeah. Baseline and Emerald. There was, I think, three or four companies from other Los Angeles county and our own. We've got a lot of equipment now. We've got two quints, the big ladder trucks. Our police department's been adding employees for what we've been doing because, you know, the goal line's come, and we need to be prepared for that. So, but again, without LVC3, we wouldn't be where we're at. And I mean that sincerely. It's been that focus and that drive, and it's, it's not been easy. Believe me, it's not been easy. It's been a hard road, but...
We have juvenile counts up in the hills.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute.
That's the biggest fight in the world.
Oh, wait a minute. Hold that one. I almost forgot that one. That was, if I was to say, besides the city manager, I think the most important thing that happened in this community was the community engagement with Applebaum Page. Without that, we would have had prisons up there. And that took a chunk out of me because that was a lot of work, a lot of patience, because we had to figure out how it was going to work and who the players were. And until we really found out, when I went out to Santa Clarita for the meeting, and I appreciate, and especially Miss Snoop Dogg Dog back there, Danita, gosh, and Rick, you know, and Pam, you know, this information comes fast, and you've got to jump on it because the county moves fast. Once they get their decisions, they don't move too fast, but they should move fast in that. But it took, you know, the gallaudons and notifying all the police stations, all the news stations, John and Ken, we would have been in a different place right now. They would have been running tractors up there and building, and I, you know, I can't thank everyone enough, but the community really rose on that one. I think that was the crowning glory, I think, as far as everything else. But there's been a lot of stuff done. So, anyway, there you go. Please start pulling.
Well, first of all, we talked about, maybe you've given us that's a bit of it, that's maybe a five-minute, you know, condition of the city, where we're at, where you see us going in the near and far future, kind of, you know, what's your vision? You've got four more, basically, what, three and a half years left as mayor this time. So, it'd be interesting to know.
Well, the people that don't know, I mean, when I first got on in 2015, it was, you know, the Good Old Boy Network, you know, it was the Good Old Boys, and it was the, you know, the Kendricks and the, and the, just, it was the Good Old Boy Network. It was, the city was run that way forever. It was, Bob Rusty was part of the, Marty Lamelli and part of the city managers. It was just basically how they had always run the city. The fire department was really, it was not a fire department. It was pretending to be a fire department, you know, and hence the lawsuit and everything else. But as far as where we are, where we're then and now, it's a massive difference. I mean, it's all positive, especially with our new city manager's coming in. He's really positive. He's, he's already met with, he had, I think he had breakfast today with the staff. He'll be coming on the 19th. I think the city management, also with our assistant, our interim city manager, Jess Duff, just that has made changes because it's almost when our previous manager, Bob Rusty, left, when he left, there was like this, this cloud that lifted. The employees are doing different things. Like, the night we had the tree lighting at the city council meeting, well, they brought a fire truck and a police truck, and they brought Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus, and it's something we've never done before. They're decorating the buildings with Christmas tree lights. You know, communication, I can talk to anybody now. Before, there was a wall. There was a huge wall up. I'd get in trouble. I'd get in trouble, you know. I'd get in trouble for saying anything or trying to get ahold of a department head or, and now it's like chain of command because, and then, you know, you had, you had council members that thought the mayor's position was just a figurehead, you know, not realizing that we have strict phone numbers to our higher electeds that really do care about our communities because, you know, we're 33,000 small, but we're mighty, tiny but mighty, you know. And so that, I think that's the biggest thing is the openness. I can walk through City Hall. It's not that, you know, "What's he doing here now?" It's like, "Hey, what's going on? You know, we're going to do this." And we all communicate now, and I think that the departments are communicating now, which they never used to do before, which is extremely important. Creativeness, not having a dictator standing over everyone saying, "This is what you're going to do, and you're going to follow my rules." And then all of a sudden, he leaves, and all of a sudden, it's just, it's like the walls of Jericho falling down, you know, and so people can talk. The departments talk, you know, and things get done quickly. The residents have issues. They get mad at me because people call me, but it's like, the point is, is that it happens. And our departments are really good. And you can call, you can put an email in online, you can, our websites have changed for the better because all of you asking and requesting for better systems. Yes, our sound system stinks in city council chambers. It stinks. I'm sorry. I don't know what we're going to do about it. I know, Danita, the other night wanted, you know, we could do live streaming. We have a thing outside, you know, like we have the tree lighting. But, but I think the biggest changes are the fact that they're, it's just easier to communicate. People are excited to see you, you know, our fire chief. It's like, that's the thing, the biggest fresh air of all. And our, our police chief, Colleen Flores, is also, it's like we're, it's like this new door opened up, you know. Everybody's communicating, police officers, the fire department. So, it's actually just a better place to be in. And I think it's going to get even better. You know, financially wise, we're in much better shape, but again, it's like our state budget. We've got this surplus. Yeah, yeah, that's probably gone already. So, you know, it's the fact is, is that we are doing our fee structure changes for our fee structures. We're also inspections, fire inspections, some of our fire codes. We're changing our community development department. The fees have changed. And I always told them, I said, "Are we, are we making money? Are we, what are we doing with these fees? Have we..." Well, you know, it's okay. And then we have new people in now and looking at fee structures so that we pay for the services that people are using for our city. And that's the most important thing because it can't be buried on the backs of the residents, but, you know, we already pay our taxes and stuff, but our businesses and our ambulance services right now with the fire department are just rocking it. We are rocking it. We're being, going to outside areas, and we bill them for that. We go to Pomona, or going north, they need our services. We have ambulances, which is great, you know. So, those things that, it's just, I think, I think that they dropped the pin off the stallions and the carriage and just let people do what they're supposed to do, be creative, and work together as a team. I feel that. And I think that's the positive thing I'm out to see. I really do. It's, it's just much different. Since the election, it's been like, especially between the council members that, you know, it, it's just positive. It's positive. There was so much negativity before, and especially with the, going to the district voting. The district voting was such a railroad. We were railroaded. I mean, I'll tell you, it was bad, you know, and there's nothing I can do about it. That old Ford one, you know, now it's like, we're in a much better spot, you know. And there's going to be pumps in the middle, for sure. But I think with every city management, it's a much better place. It's more open. The doors are open now. People are much more friendly because they don't have to worry about it anymore. They don't have people walking, you know, looking over their shoulder all the time. You know, Rick's seen it. Pam's seen it. You guys have seen it. You guys have been in the chambers for how many years now. And that, I really do appreciate the people that come. I really do. It makes, it means a lot to me because it's a lot of work, though. I'm not going to lie to you. This is a lot of work to do it right. And it's not always perfect, but I should try my best. And our council's starting to get along better, and we're starting to gel, and I think, and that's the one thing about a mayor is you've got a team built. You can't tear down all the time. Tearing down all the time is not good for any organization. It may not be perfect. It may not be the fastest way, but I've learned a lot of patience and that, you know, we've been through a lot. I mean, look what we've been through. Lawsuits that were my fault, you know, that, oh, guess they weren't, you know. So, and council members that couldn't run a mayoral campaign, each couldn't win, so we do district voting. Well, that didn't work, you know. So, and I say, "Oh, that is, I have four years," which is wonderful. I don't have to run it two years, you know, which is great. But, I mean, that's pretty much where we're at right now. I think it's just a better place. I'm really happy with the management. Our finance director, Kristi, she's, she's working her butt off. And there was, there was, there was some problems there that our previous finance director that I didn't know about, but just wasn't doing the things that we were supposed to be doing. And that needs to be changed down the road. We'll have a new system in place so that all the departments communicate together well. But, yeah, I mean, that's pretty much it.
There's such a boss.
I have a little follow-up to that. We talked about the old guard. The city attorney is finally leaving after the...
The city attorneys last night will be the 19th.
And, but...
Oh, he's leaving?
Yes.
Wow.
God, Charlie, man.
You know?
What a shame.
Can we have a part?
Hey, we, what?
And do you have a replacement already?
Well, and that's my follow-up.
Yeah.
Is rumor has it that all you'll do is transfer it over to one of the people in his office, which continues the old guard. All that baggage...
Let me explain that, though. Okay, so Jones and Meyer, or Jones and Mayor. It was Kress, Wallin and Kress, which was the attorney firm that Bob Kress and his other partners were in. And then, I think it was, when was it, Rick? Do you remember, guys, when it was two years ago when all of a sudden, they disbanded the law firm? Well, one of his partners just previously...
Two or three.
Yeah, previously died. Just literally, in the past three, four months, one of his partners died. And then Jones and Mayor, basically, another law firm, which I was very happy with because the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, Kim Barlow was the attorney, a female attorney and a partner with Jones and Mayor, and she was the attorney for the COB. And she and I got really to know each other real well. I really like her. She's, she's a good fire. And she, she will be taking over, if I understand correctly. She'll be taking over if that's still in the works. And it's a different firm. They just absorbed Bob, that's all. It was just easy. And then, you know...
So, is he leaving their firm?
Oh, yeah. He's done.
So, he's retired?
I think he's done. Yeah. Yeah, he's done. So...
I have a question for the audience. How many max population could grow on current resources in the coming five years? And it's my understanding, we, we've had thirty, about 32,000 people for through, for...
It's been different, 31, 32.
Yeah, but it's been pretty consistent.
You know what, Rick? I don't have that answer, but I know that it's, I think Eric Shear's got those figures because when we pull out that population and our arena cycle for our housing element, because we're looking at, you know, possibly three and apartment units. You're looking at the 50 homes, 40 homes, and you're looking at maybe a few more developments. The goal line's where it's going to be the biggest mass population area, I think, is where that's going to be. That's going to be the biggest because you can go high-rise and you can go multi-story, which is what you can build on that area there. So, I don't have that question with that answer, but I can get that, though. There is a population thing, but I don't know the chart, how it's going. So, I'm sorry to answer that.
Whoever answered that, who asked that question?
Rick, just give it to me, and I'll...
I'll get, I'll get.
If you, if you want to keep tabs on it, on the ones I can't, I'll get the answers to that. And you post it.
Anybody have a follow-up to that? Okay, here's another one. Would you ever support rezoning of the Sierra Leone golf course?
Only if the residents wanted to.
If so, what type, what type of development would you support if not? What plans do you have to maintain the appearance and safety of the property?
Well, first of all, we're not going to do anything unless the residents support, period, end of discussion. If they don't want it, then we have to figure out an avenue to what to do with it. Yes?
How would you determine that?
Yeah, I, because of districts. How do you define that?
Well, that's my district. And honestly, it's such a delicate area there because it involves everybody's homes, your home. I don't know because I don't know what that developer's got in his mind, but you know what? The developer that bought it, Michael Schlesinger, it's all about money. And if somebody, if somebody came along, the optimum thing, if somebody came along and said, "Yeah, I'll buy it. We're just going to just make it into a little executive course and just have little park benches and things like that, and very passive park, be great." But that's a tough question for me to answer. I'm not going to do anything and even support any rezoning unless we have a meeting together with the residents. We travel.
Because you're saying rezon, so I...
Yeah.
That doesn't justify why you just, like, rezon would be a housing. I mean, it's, because it's already developed for a golf course.
I'm not going to support any rezoning until we figure out what the residents will accept and what's going to be acceptable in that area because it's a delicate area.
And how are you going to build another road?
Yeah.
Well, that's a problem. The problem with, the problem with Sierra Leone is the fact that it's a floodplain. It's got two easements from MWD and DWP, which is on the Wheeler side. And that whole floodplain, everything goes right through Eric Simison's property, across Golden Hills, and dumps right into there. And then it goes all the way around. And then, quite frankly, that golf course, probably 90% of it's filled.
That's right, it is.
With cars and pipes and concrete.
Bodies.
Man, you know.
I do know.
So...
That's what she buried in her house.
In answering your question, no, no, I will not rezon that until we figure out a plan that's, that works with the residents. So, I just hope something comes up. I know people have been talking about it. It's sold and this and that. I know, there's nothing I can do about.
She, you know, Tim, on a serious note, I'm sorry about body thing, but I'm, what communication does the city have with the owner or the representative of the owner?
That was my next step.
Because I've, I've seen that the fallen trees have been removed, and there's been some cleanup done, and I know the city can't do that.
Yeah, they can.
They can go on that property?
Yes.
Oh, they can. Okay.
We took...
Clarify then.
When it was getting down, and that was the next question, what do we do to maintain it, which, what we've been doing? Letters out from the attorneys to the golf course ownership and saying, "Okay, we have an issue. It's going to be a fire issue." And I was upset because they weren't doing it fast enough. The attorneys were getting involved with it. And I told the city manager, I said, "Hey, enough. Get these people out there." We were literally within two days of bringing crews out there to start removing the trees and doing it, you know, getting all the stuff off. And the golf course owner brought his people. So, it's, we have communication with them.
And they're still ongoing, right? Because there's still red tag trees that they haven't done yet.
I have to check with the fire marshal on Tuesday because he's really, our fire marshal's been doing a great job. He's been washing it. They took the weeds down. There are still some trees.
Yeah, I have a red tag tree.
There's also one that's fallen on top of it on the corner of Golden Hills and Wheeler, where one fell. But they've cleared 99% of the stuff, which is really important.
So, the bottom line is they are responding?
Yes, they are responding. We're communicating with them. They haven't cut us off. And I, and I, I told Bob Rusty, I said, "I don't care. This is going to turn into a fight one day anyway."
It is.
And the fence on Golden Hills Road looks just horrific. You know, if it wasn't for our neighbor on the top there, I don't know how many more bungee cords you can use to hold the fence together. But that's a tough one because they're not going to put money into a fence that they, you know. But the point is, we're involved. Our fire marshal's involved, and we're involved with the city, with the attorneys, to make sure that everything, and even the water, because there's, there's animals in those, in those water beds. And we have a, someone's watching over it closely, let's put it that way, as far as the waters and the ponds, you know.
I just remember when Schlesinger said, you know, "I don't care how long it takes. This can be passed on to my children and their children."
Then fine.
You know, that's what I said.
So, that's my question, though, is that it's three years now, nothing. It just is getting uglier and uglier, right? And it's an eyesore. And I understand now...
Well, I make the difference. Not nicer anymore.
Yes, you mean, it's like wilderness.
It's actually, right now, it just looks like an open park, you know. But I understand where you're going.
Yeah, I mean, well, it's gotten cleaned up. But you were talking about the fence being down. I know what I was looking about here. I looked at homes that backed up to it. And I didn't choose those homes because I didn't want to have a wasteland in my backyard, right? And so, I just don't know. I mean, three years and nothing's changed. I don't know what's going to change three years from now, or six years from now, if he's going to give it to his grandchildren. And so, I'm just curious if we would prefer, or if you would prefer, to just still have an empty space that is hide weeds and just sending notices for them to clean it up every six months or whatever, or thinking of some creative idea that can, whether it's a nine-hole with large lot developments like they did, or, you know, some kind of rezoning. Azusa did that, the Azusa Greens, they changed it from an 18 to a nine-hole and development. They did a little bit more development, or at least that's what they're proposing. But something that fits into the community, that takes into account concerns about fire exits and everything like that. But, you know, doing something rather than nothing, which has been the last three years.
The problem is that course has been blinded. They took everything out, so there's nothing left. So, you would have to literally start from new. And it takes money. And right now, quite frankly, right now, I don't even think we're going to hear anything from anyone about that piece of property. You've got interest rates at 8%. You've got, you know, housing prices are dropping again. It's like, you know, right now, it's clean. There's water flowing. We've got an in with them. And if they last forever, then they last forever.
It's basically open space, which is a good thing.
It's not a bad thing.
And, and, you know, to go back to what you said previously about the floodplain, yes, that can be engineered so that the floodplain can be taken care of.
At what cost?
And you can, that's the point.
Oh, no, it's too expensive.
And it's way too expensive.
Construction's gone up 100%, probably.
Yeah, it's way too expensive.
There's just no way. Between concrete and steel?
Yeah, no, it's just like... I'd also like to comment on to your wasteland comment. I'm like, you know, some of you like to look at the back of somebody's RV, in the back of somebody's backyard, and others like to look at an open space rather than, no, I'm just saying, I'm just, just going to tell you right now, like, I would, right now, I'm looking at the same thing that the people that backed up to Monterey or whatever are looking at, which is trees and debris and grass and whatever. It's not really any different. So, when anybody says anything to me, I just go, "Well, at this point, it just, it doesn't look like a golf course anymore." My only gripe is the dead trees because of the, that they are red tagged.
Which most of them have gotten removed, but I think it looks...
No, we still have some.
But I know, but I think it looks much better than it ever has.
I think it looks fine, but I also think, like, the city should be firm and stand, like what you said, and be like, "We're not going to cave to this guy." I'm like, "Oh, would you mind, you know, giving up the trees?" Like, we need this damn song.
And that's what we've been doing here.
And be like, "No, this is our city."
That's what we've been doing, and it's very important because, you know, attorneys will attorney everything to death. They'll just, we'll have flames shooting out of our homes, and they're saying, "Oh, well, maybe we should have done some of them." No, we put the, we lit the fire. There was Bob Kress and stuff was going on. And I said, "That's it. Get this thing cleared." I'm getting phone calls every single day. This is unsafe.
Well, there's laws relating to that.
Oh, there is.
So, you can easily be like, "You don't, you, we could put the bill and work on your taxes." So, like, we do have leverage with it.
No, and, and it's been monitored. They're monitoring it constantly. And I'll just relay that to them, go out and investigate, make sure if they're tagged, we get a pretty...
They were here there this week. So, I'm assuming they're just doing the slow program, I'm assuming.
Well, again...
I can't see people back there.
A little pressure never hurts, you know, because we, I'll be honest, with the manager leaving, there's kind of a reverse vacuum. So, things kind of get kind of lost in translation. And now we're moving ahead right now. And because the weather's been, it's been raining. They cleared the weeds. It's kind of a green growth right now, and I think we're going to have that for some time, you know. So, we're staying on topic. Danita?
Oh, well, you were talking about the fact that you would only do it if the residents were in favor of it. And I think that...
I know where you're going.
Depending on how bad the city's finances are at that time, that, that decision could change easily because look at the Amherst project.
This is a little different piece of property, though, because it's not your normal five-acre flat. This is not a five-acre flat. This is acres of acres of terrain that are unstable, you know. And I, personally, I think he bought something that's not going to work out real well because, first of all, construction's gone so high. And how are you going to develop that with a floodplain? So, it's a different piece of property. It's not your postage stamp like the Palisades on, you know, on Fruit Street. It's not the same.
And another consideration is the access and interest to it because that's very limited.
It is because the only ones, you only have a few because that one is that little culvert that's the cul-de-sac. And then really, you can't drive onto Wheeler because you've got, what, 30-foot drop-off, you know. And there's a lot of, I think you have power lines.
There's a lot of them.
But anyway, we're clearing it. We're keeping, I think it looks much better. I was very happy with how quickly they responded. And I was literally, you guys, come on, you know, like a dog with a bone like Rick. You just gotta, we gotta, you gotta fight. You know, I'm not afraid to fight.
No.
Believe me. And our new manager, I think, coming in is going to be just, he's going to listen to the residents.
You know, we love that little orange fence thing. He thought he was going to just do whatever he wanted.
Oh, and that last?
Yeah.
Well, you guys took it down anyway.
I feel, I just feel like, you know, this fight to the end, you have...
God bless the, the people that are maintaining the ponds because our ponds are beautiful over there. The ponds are gorgeous on that golf course.
Well, my...
Harsh.
That hill's out there.
Water hole.
Another, another subject from someone. Does the city have plans to switch to a public banking system?
No.
And what would that take?
Too much.
No, a little more detail.
Right now, I think there's three entities that are doing public banks. And there is a criteria that they have to go through. There's a lot of money that has to be spent in order to get even on the, I want to say the docket, in order to even process it, to submit it for a bank. And it's just, even Bob Rusty said, he said, "You don't have a plan. I'm not even looking at it." And it's correct. There's no plan. If it benefited this community and we explained it and we all, you know, digested it and it looked that it was a good thing for our community because we invest our money into it and everything else, that's great. But at the end of the day, we're not a bank. Real city.
Normal town.
Period. But no, I'm, I'm not in favor because the explanation I got when I went to the meetings was zero. It was just like, "Well, they do this, they do that, but there's no banking yet because they're in, they've applied." And it takes hundreds of thousands of dollars. Well, guess what? We have employees in buildings. This is not going to happen. At least for me, and I think I probably would say that the, supported by the other council members.
Anyone have a question?
I'm wondering how that could be pursued with the other council members because there are cities that are going towards that. Of course, I'm going to say, social reasons. And it's something that would so drastically impact the city in a very bad way.
It's dangerous if you don't do it right.
It's very dangerous.
Yeah, because...
And who could propose it?
Well, thank you.
Well, that kind of was for me, was a nail in the coffin.
Well, but you have one of the council members, a very large proponent of what Cassie supports, and that's who presented it to the city?
One of five. One of five. Only takes three to shoot it down.
There's another election in two years.
And the election isn't always the one that...
Well, there's another election in two years, but that means that if, and that's, you know, if people want to run, they better get on it now. It's not wait till the six weeks before the election. As we know, it takes a village for an election, and it takes a village to bring candidates up. But again, at the end of the day, too, it has to be candidates that are serious about it. And not a lot of candidates, but a few candidates because you want to pick those ones that, and especially with districts, it's so much easier. It's so much easier to go districts.
I can't do it yet.
I know. You're done, buddy. Yeah, districts are so much easier as far as canvassing. But the point is, is that if people want to start thinking about it, you better start doing it now. Right?
Billy, can I read? Look at Adam.
He knows not to look at me.
I think we're looking at both.
Here's a question that was submitted, and it's probably a good follow-up. It says, well, I'll preface this. When Steve Johnson ran, he ran on the anti-district voting. That was one of his strongest points. And the day he was sworn... And the day he was sworn in, he looked at the city attorney and he says, how do we fix this? And the city attorney, if I remember right, said, we're looking into it. And I remember my response was, why didn't you look into it before you allowed it to happen? But that's another story. So this question is, what is the status of the city attorney looking into the legality of the district voting change by the previous council?
I think the safest we could even do it would be 2024, which would be on the, on the ballot, which would be, do you wanna vote for an elected mayor or, you know, the district? So that's just part of it.
So when the city attorney said he was looking into it, basically?
No, he did, he actually gave us a paperwork and how it works. And some of the ways that it can work on redistricting is if you change your district, if you absorb communities, then you change your makeup. And when you change your makeup, you can change your districts. So there's ways, but you know, we have to really feel this out a little bit too, because quite frankly, I mean, I don't like the fact that someone took away my right to, to run for mayor, but, um...
What did you say, that the way you do it is to absorb other areas?
You would, you would annex communities into yours. When you annex communities in yours, whether it's a thirty-unit, or a fifteen-unit, or a twenty-unit, depending on where they are, and they pop into another district, the matrix goes off.
It's like Jerry Bannon.
Well, yeah, and so there, there are ways, but that was one of them. And then just basically the fact that, uh, you know, it was taken away from the people. The vote of the people was taken away unfortunately, and it just, but those people are gone. So it's just a matter, now we'll work through it with the new city manager, or with the new city attorney, and just figure out our process. And yeah, Steve is, and I, I didn't agree with it, I didn't vote for him, you know. Do you?
When you say communities being absorbed, are you talking about the unincorporated area of the...
Yes.
Okay.
One hundred percent.
'Cause, you know, we, we lost eighty percent of our vote, they lost one hundred percent of their vote. They were not allowed to vote in this last election, did you know that?
I don't...
Because they are not part of the district.
No, exactly.
Because they're unincorporated.
No. We're talking about, there's a splinter of homes...
We're talking about like where the accident took place, those homes right there along baseline, on the other side of the...
Yeah, there's a whole bunch. On the right side, it's the three-digit houses. The three-digit houses, not the four-digit houses. They're on the right side on baseline, and also the cul-de-sac. And then also, I'm talking about the ones... Yeah, well, exactly. And I'm talking about, well, across from Ramona.
Right.
So all that Ramona area, but I'm talking about the, what is it, the eighteen or twenty homes up by us, the gated community? They're really nice homes, the big homes. We had to go through a double set of gates, that's the tract, the first tract. And we've been working, we've been talking to them for a while to annex into Laverne, you know, so...
Which one, on the north or the south side of the street?
North, it's the big, big homes, that they're like...
The customer?
Yeah, they're like eight thousand, eight thousand.
Rassie Lane?
Yeah, Rassie Lane, yeah.
Oh, that, what is that, was that Cali?
Cali County.
Yeah, yeah.
For sheriff. We supply the water, but it's, you know, but it's sheriff and...
It's where they want to be.
Better services. Sheriff, if you call the sheriff, you might get him in a day.
Free.
No, I'm saying, it's where they want to, you know.
Dynamics, people, people that just, oh, they're, you know, we get Laverne, it's gonna cost us more, it's like...
Nah.
Get what you pay for, you know.
Kathy has a question.
Yes, Kathy.
What, what would you...
Do you have Joe's keys?
I do have, I'm watching. What would you suggest that we do then? Should we keep bringing that up?
As far as the redistricting?
Yes, or should we...
No, no, not right now.
Okay.
Let's get, we have new management coming in. Let's, I will let him know tomorrow at breakfast that here's like a swath of concerns.
Okay.
The first thing is transparency, the second thing is public records requests, the, you know, third thing is, you know, what we've been through, what, where we are, where we worked and where we are, so no, listen.
Okay, that's what I mean.
Believe me, you're gonna really like him, he's gonna be one that's gonna be, you know, very visible with the community. He'll be out in the audience shaking hands, and, you know, telling you, he probably sees his kids and his wife. I mean, I think he's gonna be, he's another Tim Hepper in hope.
Old and quick.
Oh, gosh. He's buttoning me up for something.
As a quick follow-up to that, and I'm excited for the new city manager as well, but, um, I know this was a concern I've heard. Is he fired from City of Fullerton? Do you know why? And if so, are you able or willing to share the reasons for that? Did that come up during the interview process? 'Cause that was...
There, there was politics involved, I think, if I'm not mistaken, and it was an old regime. And, uh, they didn't want him to go the direction he wanted to go, and they fired him. And the City of Fullerton's a mess.
Right, and, and I'm just curious, I assumed it was political, but I just didn't know as to what type of an issue.
Most city managers, honestly, it's three to six. That's it, three to six years. And we did it because it was a good old boy network. They just kind of putting people in place, and it's, but he, he, any of the people that we interviewed across the board, all had issues. They were all in the telegram, like they showed you guys, they're all in the telegram, as far as, you know, the, the local newspapers they were in, what they did. Nothing's perfect.
Of course.
Politics can get ugly, as we all know.
Yeah, I'm just curious if you know what the particular issue was there?
I think personally what it was, what I, my understanding was the fact that there was an, uh, they, uh, there was a number of people on the, on the council that wanted to do a different direction, and there was a tax measure involved, and they're hurting severely from it because they didn't follow his instructions. So, you know, that's, that's much fun.
Thank you.
Do you?
It, was he recommended by Chief Nick, because Nick can't afford to...
He was suggested by Chief Nick, but there was eight other people that had very good qualifications. It's just, you know, the cream roasts the top at the end, and he was definitely, hands down, you know, so...
Even here, right?
No.
Oh, I thought they had a list.
We took that away while...
Yeah, they do.
After Rusty dissipated for nine years, he changed the law. Here's one, um, and whoever wrote it can certainly add to it. If the city has now hired a fire chief and other necessary personnel and equipment, and has reopened Station Three, why are the emergency calls not being handled in-house and still going to LA County Fire?
I know whose that is. We, uh, during the, during my first tenure in office, when we had the issues with the fire department, there was a major problem in dispatch between fire and police. Fire is different than police in the aspect that fire has to have like a, a safety certification. So when you're talking to an individual that's in a life-threatening situation, they have to know what's going on so they can assist those people. And, um, they were certified, but there was some friction in there because of the lawsuit and the problems between the fire chief and the police department at the time, because of the, before the lawsuit, that it wasn't functioning well. And, um, because of the fact that fire is such a delicate one, because it's a life-saving, where police dispatch is tremendous in itself, for the fact that you have a call, you have an issue, you have a homeless person, or you've got a robbery, and, and, you know, going on. And it was, this was even before Chief Nick got in, that it was better for the community. The fire department has a stellar dispatch system. And now with our system and our fire department, the dispatchers in the fire department in LA County know exactly what's going on, they get to the right department, and they dispatch the proper resources. So we're getting much better service. We're paying for it, but we were paying for it with the dispatchers, so it's kind of a wash. So the, the LA County Fire Dispatch System is much better. And the police department now, with their dispatch system that we have, is working well. We just, we have a problem with, with parity of pay and keeping dispatches, because we're an amazing city for training. Any department you go to in the city is a training ground, because we do so well. The problem is, our pay is at whatever, I don't know what you wanna call it, a median, but whatever. We don't pay as high as some of the other communities, um, so these people jump ship after like six months or a year, and they're, they're so well-trained, they, they go to other cities.
We're gonna fix that, 'cause I think that's a big deal.
It, it takes time. It takes time, and we have actually, we have...
It takes time, what, to raise the pay scale?
It takes time to adjust, because, again, at the end of the day, your general fund can only support so much. And, you know, uh, and we, but let me preface this. We have a very good benefit system and a retirement system. So you weigh the wages, but then you balance it with the benefit packages, and we're not a bad city.
So is that pay increase, sorry, I'm seven out of, but the, the not pay increase, but the tax increase, how much of that money actually went to police and fire?
Three hundred and sixty thousand, I think it was.
So like a dollar amount, or like a...
No, it was, it was, it was whatever the amount that the tax measure LV was paid for the last employee raises. That we gave. And that's what it's for. Yeah. Not necessarily advertised like that.
That's not exactly what it was for, when it was on, again, you're, you, you make a sales pitch, and then you do what you want. And the sales pitch was that it would be new services, and in fact, there's a question here. Since passing Measure LV tax increase, what new city programs have been introduced? It seems like most of the tax money is going towards employee salary increases and pensions, and that's where the money's going.
There, most of it did, but there was a portion of it that we have for, um, what were we doing with that? There were some others, I can't remember, uh, there were some other services. There was, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars that was for something else, but most, I mean, let's be honest, guys, Measure LV is for...
That was such bullshit.
Yeah, no, no...
Could you please poke that one through?
That's what it was, guys. If we don't, if we...
Maybe you should do it.
If we don't do it, then LA County's gonna just take it away from us. Oh, yeah, where are we at? Yeah.
That was a...
It's, it's really, most of it, ninety, a good percentage of it is just for employee, is for employee...
Well, that's what you should have said. That's not how it was sold.
No, and I agree, I, I, I agree. I supported it, I supported, I think it's the best thing we ever did, because we're not going back to the well every time, you know?
Well, we don't like to tax ourselves.
I understand.
But what happens when Measure LV ends?
I don't think there's a sunset.
No, there's not.
There's no sunset.
No, no.
Well, it went to the voters, so does it have to go back to them?
It goes to eleven.
Yeah, LA County might do that some way.
No, I don't think there's, there's no sunset clause in that. I think that's in perpetuity.
Yeah.
And, uh, come on. When you put a tax measure on there and you raise, have you ever seen it go down?
Sometimes, yeah, we have.
Very seldom though, but I, some, but very seldom.
We won't talk about sunset dates, like the blockade on Boden.
I'm glad you brought that up, I have a question. Maybe you can answer, maybe.
I gotta take my exams in them.
But it's my understanding that the utility tax brings in...
Utility users tax?
Yeah, brings in about six million a year, if I remember right the numbers.
I thought it was three.
Okay, let's say three. But every year, as far as I can see, they put it in the budget, they approve the budget, and about a month after the budget is approved...
Adjusted.
They come, and they come back and ask for an extension of the utilities tax, because basically, they already spent it. So my question would be, great example. When did the utility tax get voted in, and what was the premise behind that? Because it's become never-ending. Is there a tax that a city ever puts in place that they ever discontinue? It doesn't appear to be.
Very few. And I don't, I don't know the date of the utility users tax, when I got on, it was there, it's been there for a long time.
And it gets voted in every year as routine, nobody questions it.
It's part of our, well, it's part of our budget, yeah.
But if it was a, if it was a tax voted on for something twenty years ago, and the city has, every city has just become used to it, but people didn't vote for that test?
That's a good point.
You know, you know, maybe, there used to be this lighting, what was it, the lighting district? Lighting and landscape district thing, and it went away, and I think this utility tax supplanted it.
Placed it.
I, I, I can't answer that, I, I, it might have, but the lighting, the lighting did go away?
Yeah.
And then the utility users tax? I don't think it's been that long, the utility users tax, but it's been a while.
It'd be nice to know.
We write that down?
What was it?
Before.
When it was voted in?
Okay.
What was it for?
Are you gonna write those down for me?
I will, yes.
Thank you, 'cause it's all my...
You can watch the video.
I can see the council meeting.
You can see that fat birding.
Gary said it was moss, it was moss, some other...
And a long since we're talking about taxes. Do you support the continued selling off of the property, of Prop A funds to prop up the general fund? It happens every year to the tune of three or four hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Why?
Because if we don't use it, we lose it. And if we can transfer it to another city, yes, it's a discount, but, uh, yeah, I do.
Well, I'm paying my property tax, it's great.
You can, you can try it. As, when I first got on that, I asked, I said, what are we doing here? Well, because of the fact we don't have a transit system, we don't have buses. We do through, uh, the one in Clermont, we're part of that, not Clermont, Montclair. Um, every city gets it, either state or federal, and it's like, if we have nothing to use it for, we use it for certain things, there's certain things we can, but not to use that amount. So would it be better to just give it away, or to transfer it for a reduced? I, I'm all for it, because it's funds, if we give it away, we don't have it, that's three, four, five hundred thousand dollars. I understand your point. Well, for not using, why are we, why are we, why are the citizens paying for the tax? There are communities that do, so if you pick and, pick and choose the communities, like Montclair and some of these other cities that have the bus services, they pay for that, they use those Measure A funds. And they use them up, but there are other cities that need them to do what they're using. Who'd we sell to, is it RT or someone?
White Garden.
White Garden, they've got a system that they can use it for, so pay. I mean, granted, but we never, we never paid for that to begin with, the funds that we got. So if we're not, it's four hundred thousand dollars, we're looking to get three hundred thousand, I mean, it's, I, you know, it's a tax, and it comes to every city, every city gets it, and the cities that can't use it, they sell it off and still get money. So I think, I personally, that's an employer too, or that's part of structure, or buildings, or buying a fire truck, or whatever, you know. What else?
Anybody have one? Um, go ahead.
I have a question, yes.
Where are your keys?
Keys? Right where I thought they were.
On the, on, right next to the toilet.
Yep. In the restroom.
That's right. Yes, Joe, what's your question?
It's all in here. It's happening out. What happened to the development on Amherst? That was so controversial, because it required, we're gonna build all of those homes, but part of the deal was they had to build a public park in.
They're building it.
They are?
Oh, they're, that's...
Unfortunately, yes.
Well, what happened was, is the builder that had the property, Katie Holmes took it over. Katie Holmes took it over and they're building now, so, which is good, because Katie Holmes is a good builder, and they, they're, they're, they're solvent, thank goodness, 'cause some of these builders right now, they're backing out of stuff, that kinda concerns me, especially on the gold line. So it's being built.
And you're gonna make the homeowner association pay for it?
What?
The park partner.
Uh, that's probably exactly what's gonna happen.
How could that be? I don't, why doesn't the city pay for the park if it's...
I'll ask the question, but, yeah.
The city, if it's a public park, then the city needs to pay for it. You can't expect a certain amount of people to pay for a public park, that's ridiculous.
I, I understand. That's the way it's written, so, but we'll, we'll look into it. I'll see.
I don't think that's legal.
And the ongoing maintenance?
Huh?
And the ongoing maintenance?
Yes. They're gonna make the homeowner association take care of that part.
It's not a park like you're thinking of a park. It's just, it's a passable park.
But it's a public park. It's not a public, it's public. It's not a.
Well, that, that's not a gated community for me.
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
You can't, you can't make citizens pay for a public park.
This was a discussion we had when we first went through it and it's, it's legal. It's been done and it's going in, but.
I don't think it's legal. I can't do that. So, so a homeowner association builds a swimming pool and everybody can use it and they have to pay for it? That doesn't make any sense.
You can swim in my pool.
They can just do line through and enjoy. They can do anything they want.
Boy, don't even start. There's certain things we can't do, but we can do that.
Yeah.
And I understand your frustration, but it's going in and it's gonna be what it is. And I, I mean, it's passed through a lot, so. I, I think it's gonna be a nice community, very nice, especially Katie Holmes. So I can do that.
Well, homeowners.
And I know that the street at one point, that's, things are gonna have to change because that's just not gonna be, it's not gonna work well.
I'm gonna send out a resistance sign that says, they're gonna make me pay for a public park.
You're not allowed to park.
See you out there, Ricky.
Probably except me out there, really.
You know that little, on Third Street, there's that, that little person that's swinging in there on that little swing?
Oh, yes.
With that, look, we're gonna put you a big sign there. Anna said you can't stay in here unless you put dollars in the little jar.
Anybody have one?
Can we have a beer?
And this is, this is pretty specific, but we'll keep it.
Is it a yes or no?
Should trustees for private companies or organizations doing business in Laverne be allowed to serve up as city council member? Because where do their loyalties lie?
That's a hard one because a lot of us belong to organizations, we belong to boards, trustees within the community. And I was one of them myself. I don't think it really jaded me in any way for the, for Hillcrest. Was, was, I was on board of directors for six years and if there's a decision to be made, I think a recrusal would probably be in order if there was something to be, decision to be made for that community. That would be an ethics law violation. So you have to be really careful with that. But, no, because everyone of us belongs to some type of organization, whether it be benevolent or some kind of a, you know, company or something. Again, it has to do with ethics. If it violates the ethics laws, then you can't vote on something. You have to recruse yourself. You have to talk to your attorney. Very important. I just finished my class, by the way.
They teach politicians ethics lessons.
They're very special.
My ass, Joe. Actually, it does help though because there are things you look at and you go, whoa. You don't even think about that this would be an ethical violation, but, you know, there's a trail for everything in life. If it starts out stinky, it's gonna end up stinky. So if it's stinky here, remove yourself. That's the easiest way to do it, you know? No, I, I think that it's, it's ethics laws and I think that, I think it's fine. It's just the fact that be careful with the new attorney because some of the stuff we've done over the number of years have been like, what are you doing? You know? Yes, ma'am.
I'm related to that. What is it that they're building adjacent to the public storage on White Avenue directly across from the Fairplex?
Those are tilt ups. That's where that building where they vacated it on the left side is going down. Um, they stopped construction because they were, I think they were doing without permits or something, but those are tilt ups. Those are just tilt ups, uh, commercial, what I understand.
So that part is technically former, then it is not Laverne?
No.
Because public storage is still Laverne.
Yeah, I think, I think that part might be Laverne. That's Laverne.
Okay.
How far down?
Tilt up is a commercial, have you ever seen, like in Ontario, where you see all these, the flat construction going on? And there's concrete and then you see all these big concrete pumping trucks and you see cranes and they're lifting these big chunks of concrete up? That's a tilt up. What they do is they basically lay the foundation and your, your basic concrete floor. And then on top of that, they spray it with a non, uh, uh, element to, so it doesn't stick. And they make forms and they basically build walls on the ground with all the steel and concrete. And they have hooks in them. And then what they do when it's time, when it sets, those walls are lifted and they become part of the structure. And then they put a wood roof. That's a tilt up. I'm glad Congress is aiming that. I've been doing that my whole life.
I was surprised at the last, the earthquakes that we had here. What happened to Rebar and Richard?
They're all solid rebar and they connect together with solid steel. They have steel structure on top. They're all basically tied together and then on the bottom, the bottom six, three, eight feet is all rebar and steel.
So what type of commercial is it gonna be?
Uh, I don't, I, just big commercial buildings, whatever. It's just like over at San Pablo Business Park, which is one of the finest commercial parks. And nobody ever sees it. You go on Wheeler, straight down and that's San Pablo. And that is an amazing tax.
The pharmaceutical company?
No, before that. All that area there is all commercial. I went to look for a building over there and this was a number of years ago to move into Laverne. Two, three million dollars. Now they're even, I don't know what they are now, but it's a beautiful area. It really is. And then you go to Gilead.
Questions? Okay, this is what I'm like. A few years ago, a couple of.
You saved it for the last. I know it. I know it's coming.
This isn't the last one.
Next to last.
Couple of years ago, there was a big issue regarding audit from, through Holden's office. You had made numerous motions for an audit and the old council wouldn't even give you a second. So it was never voted on. Now you're mayor. It appears you might have a vote because at least two other people wrote, rammed on the fact that, that they wanted to see that, an audit, but it seems to be a dead issue suddenly. So I guess my question is, number one, why? What's changed? And when, if ever, will you support doing the ten-year audit?
Well, as we all know, when you get on and you run for office, there's a lot of things you wanna do. And I think I'm about seventy-five percent there is what we've changed because of us. The audit at the time, because I just did not trust the system. I didn't trust what was going on. I felt we should've had an audit. Now, fast forward, almost eight years later, we're in a different position. We have a new finance director. I think our, I've been looking at the audited demands ever since I got on. Uh, there's nothing, there's a few things out of whack every once in a while, but it's small, little tiny stuff. My personal feeling is I want my new city manager to come in. I think we're in a much better place. I trust our finance director and I'm gonna trust our city manager. And if there's an issue, we'll bring it to council and we'll bring it to the residents because at this point, no, I don't believe so. I just don't. I'm in so much of a different place than I was before. I just don't think we need it right now. I really don't. And it's, um, at this point right now, our finances and our situation is, they're being corrected as far as how it functions. Not where the money is or a black hole somewhere where there's, you know, bad dealings. The money comes in, the money goes out. It's just right now, it's, uh, there was a little bit of a mess left with our last finance director. So Christie's working really hard to get on there. And she's very open. I talk to her all the time. There's nothing hidden. Every account has its place. We need a new finance system. We need a new finance, uh, uh, computer package. But can't do that until you get your, all your ducks in a row. So to answer your question, yes, I did. Things have changed. I'm very, very positive with our, with our staff right now. I think that, like I said, I trust my finance director. I'm gonna trust my new city manager and if there's any issues, over to us. And I know it's gonna be a bone of contention here, Rick, and you and I have gone around and around about it, but at this point, no.
My only comment on that is, having trust in new people is wonderful. And hopefully, you know, Christie, I've spoken to Christie. She's very good. I liked her before she left. Never understand what she left. But an audit is to see what's going on in, in past years. And you can do everything great going forward, but if there was stuff that happened in the past that shouldn't have happened, such as transferring money between funds, the sewer funds, the water funds, all of those things, that's what shows up in an audit. So I understand saying, we hired new people, they're all better, we love them going forward.
Well, that's not.
That doesn't change.
It's not so crazy.
That, that doesn't change.
No, I understand.
The ten years, the ten years in the past, which is what Holden's whole thing was, the, about past situations. Not forward situations, but past. So that has not changed.
Again, I think we're in a better place. I'm gonna trust my people, but I, I'm on the watch as closely on what they call a pain in the butt. You know, I was told that the public works director left because I called him every day because we had issues. And our streets in North Laverne, the streets that just paved are wrong. It's, they're, they're a mess. They're a mess. But I just, I think we're in a better place and I don't think we need it right now. And I, I'll be the first to tell you, if I smell, I smell something rotten, I'm gonna tell you right off the bat, this is not right. And I'll go straight to the city manager and say, no, and I'll let my council know, have a closed session, say, this stuff, no. We've gotta be honest with our, with our residents. That way we get support from our residents, you know? And you put, you guys put me here to watch over this place. And quite frankly, I think we've done a pretty good job, at least myself. We answered. Things get done quicker than they used to be anymore. We have a direct line to anything that goes on in the city. Uh, would, are you a little cold back there?
Yes.
There's a, I can just.
There a heater?
If, if one were to do a ten-year audit, what, what would be the result of that? What actionable items or processes would come from that? I mean, yes, you could identify issues, but, um, could anyone be sued? Could anyone, you know? What type of, what would be the results?
Well, first of all, going back does what? Going back does what?
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm a, I'm a, I'm, 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 I don't wanna go back on anything.
No.
I really, because it doesn't fix, you can't fix a disaster. But I'm, this is an honest question. I'm wondering what the result of an audit like that would be. I mean, what would, what, what positive results would come?
Well, what if embezzlement took place that you were unaware of? You can prosecute that person.
Can you prosecute? Can, you know, but you.
Well, I mean, you only prosecute if people still there.
Or alive.
No, embezzlement.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of things, guys, but at the end of the day, right now, right, well, here's the deal. It's messy right now. We're getting ourself together again. They're pulling all the books together. It takes time. And the resources to pull all of our stuff together because it was, it was in a disarray. And, um, the accounting, as far as I'm concerned, is extremely important to the basis of your community. And especially like Rick said, yeah, they, they do transfer money between funds. They take, they borrow here. And the water fund is the one where it's always, because there's money there. But there's also money in there for, uh, long-term installations and maintenances for, especially for our water systems. Very expensive to operate and they don't last forever. So, you know, Lily, what are you doing? And so I think right now, we need to let them get their stuff together and an internal audit, sure, that's not out of the question, but I'm gonna leave it up to Christie. Here's the deal. When you come on as mayor and what we did with originally when this city was a mess and they wanted to blame me for everything. They wanted to ostracize me and all we wanted to do was just be transparent. Well, that's a four-letter word. Yes, ma'am.
City was a mess, but they do an annual audit every year and they were just like so wonderful out in those streets.
Before that, we did those CAFRA, we got those CAFRA awards, which were, you know, for the auditing. It's just that, the problem was is that she was trying to switch the way we did our accounting, but not do it properly. So that's, that's the mess I'm talking about. The accounting is, 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 is out of whack right now. So she's putting it back in place so we can get all of our account records in the proper place. Not, not wrong, but we haven't submitted anything yet either. Uh, they're behind on stuff because of the fact that, so.
So is that the real reason why Marla's fired?
That's a personnel issue. I don't know, another council member had breakfast right there and she unloaded on me and it was like three days later, she was, I guess she was walked out of City Hall. But it was like, there was issues. I mean, there was a problem, but Bob Russey hired her. We didn't, you know? If there was a problem, he should've been watching closer. Sorry. You know, if something happens in my company, who's responsible? Me. If someone gets killed, it's me. If someone gets injured or a customer has a problem, it's me. You know, and so he handled it. He took care of it, but at the same time, it left a mess. Again, watch over, you don't have to hover over people. Give them their space, but at least monitor what they're doing, you know? And, and people told him, or other departments told him, but I don't know what happened. I don't know how it happened. And it's, quite frankly, it's a personnel issue. I don't wanna get involved in that kind of stuff.
I think that's why many of us are apprehensive about the new city manager. Because Marla's history was negative, yet she was brought here. And the new city manager has so baggage. And so I think we're worried that that may accompany him in his, in sort of his city and.
Danita, after being in the industry for twenty-five or thirty years, we all have baggage. Every single one of us. And some of it.
But not to the level that these people.
But at the level of these people, they are running a city with a huge budget. Fullerton's a big city. And again, if you have a council that's demonstrative, you're not gonna last too long. Especially if you're not a captain of what they want. But you, but you hire them to run the city and do things right for the community in order that they have funding so they can afford their services. And if you don't do that, you're screwed. You're just screwed. And that's what happened. I mean, you know, you're hired by the council. If they don't like you, you're done. That's three votes. It's all things.
Did, did Christie?
Where's Joe's keys?
Christie used to, yeah. Christie used to work for us.
Christie worked for us for a long time.
And now they're, they said she come back for no less than two years? Or is she coming back permanently?
No less than two years because of the fact that a new city manager, she just wanted to, because she left Ontario for a job that she was getting promoted. Because when she went to Ontario, I think Christie realized that she thought she didn't have a skill set to be a, you know, a finance director. Well, she got over there and she, she was helping them.
Oh, wow.
And then she realized that, oh, and now with that.
I work in Ontario.
You got, you gotta remember.
Yeah.
How do you function when you have a thumb over you, not walk?
Yes.
So I'll just leave it at that, so.
There's a lot of focus on South Laverne and so forth right now and for the next few years. What's gonna happen with our infrastructure in North Laverne? And like you say, it froze and so forth too, and our, our water situation. Been in there a long time.
We have a CIP, a capital improvement project, which you've seen the roads have been paved. The whole city is on that map as far as how it works out. And the roads are laid out for so many years because if we keep cutting down and repaving, the roads will last two, three times as long. And the infrastructure is in there, especially in the water fund, especially for the basins and the piping and things like that, that's in there. As you notice on, on Wheeler Avenue, that pump house was redone. Those kind of things. Those are infrastructure things. You know, same as our pump up by us, which is up, um, Calerina. That's a pumping area. So the infrastructure's in the capital improvement project and they have to maintain that. You know, we maintain our streets, we maintain our lights and our parks. So it's, it's all part of that plan. It's very well laid out too.
You know, it's an adminis, I'm sorry.
So I was just wondering if we're shifting resources in other places and leaving that, you know, for the future?
No, no, because Gold Line, most of the Gold Line stuff is ninety-nine percent Kewett Parsons and Gold Line, you know? The only thing that's part of ours right now is that bridge, which we really do need to go across Arrow. That's gonna be cool if that happens for the other part to meet the Fairplex. But that's gonna require some more, more state dollars and federal dollars, but, um, it, no, it's CIP program even. And actually, when I got on, they had kind of stopped the capital improvement project program. And I said, if you don't put money into this and, and, and budget it, we'll just fall apart.
It'll cost twice as much to, to fix it.
Oh, now, oh, yeah. But no, we're, no, nothing. And again, whether you're in a district or not, north, south, east, west is Laverne. I don't care what district you're in. Every single part of Laverne is a concern for any council member. And if you see different, you let me know. Does, I mean, you know?
Well, we, we've got an issue just there, you know, you probably see it all the time, uh, at Golden Hills and Wheeler. People don't stop there.
Oh, at the stop sign?
My gosh.
That's dangerous too.
Yeah, I mean, we've.
We don't wanna light there.
You're not gonna be lighting.
I've got the camera there that.
I'll relay that. I'll relay that to Police Department.
It's just constant.
That's dangerous because I get a lot of morning walkers and afternoon walkers with their dogs and it's a big street.
Yeah.
And are the, you know, I've, I've noticed, are the lines still good? Because we went through and painted the lines and I made them use that thermoplastic, which is a thicker paint. So it's got a reflective quality in it, but it's also lasts because a lot of the paint they're doing, which is like, it's almost like white.
Yeah, I, I think you could put barricades up there and people just.
Come the way around it.
You know, they just, they're, it's really weird. It's really weird.
I wonder if the people on Mountain Springs come this way.
Yeah, they'll sound, yeah.
I'll, I'll mention it though, because you know, we've, between homeless and everything else, we've just tapped out, but I think we, don't start me on that.
That was my, this is what I've been waiting for. After we get over all the finances and all this, you know, material stuff, I wanted to talk about the social aspect in the city and the homelessness and the, you know, the police department is, do they still have a liaison with prior communities and how does that work? And my gosh, you know, five years ago before COVID, we would have our annual census and we'd have like, oh yeah, we found one person. And now you cannot walk a block without seeing a person that is homeless.
You know the gentleman that has the train, the little train where he has his little carts?
Yes.
And he's gone. And Helen is gone. Okay, you want my three cent tour or are you a three cent tour? I just had a meeting with. I just had a meeting with Police Department, Community Services Department, Tri-City Mental Health, and with Jeff Duff, put it together because I always get, there's bits and pieces that I wasn't quite sure. But Community Services Department, Avon Duran, is kind of the liaison between all of this. And she, we have a host program, Navigators. And so our Police Department have been trained with services to Tri-City Mental Health, to help, have them assist on an issue with a homeless person. And then also, we have Services Now, we have One Day Week, which I just was with Avon Duran, asking if we could get this Lakata, which is part of LA County, but they're specialized services. They'll get them vouchers, they'll get them medical services, they'll get them glasses, they'll get their driver's license, things like that. So we went from 80 calls to 200 calls. So we are very involved. The problem is, is that the issue is big, and we cannot take these people off the streets. It may take 12 or 24 times in order to get an individual off the street because you can't force them. We're putting storage in the public safety yard for their belongings. So when we pull them off the street, if they, we give them services, we hold their belongings. Our city is doing an extremely good job. Our police officers, every single one of them is trained. And Lakata, which is the other service in LA County, they're just basically social workers, but they're very well versed on getting services. I guess one was approached with a weapon, this was a week or two ago. And our Police Department are going to train them in safety. So that's how ingrained we are right now. I, we have tremendous services. Tri-City Mental Health is incredible. They have not only the crisis team, but also for the community itself, for mental illness and people that are on the verge of losing their homes and basically all those kinds of services. But yes, it's functioning very well. The problem is, we don't have enough staff. And that's what we're working on now. We need to have an in-house navigator that's going to stay there and work like Avon Duran does to be able to get in touch with Tri-City Mental Health if there's an issue. If it's a police issue, we get a hold of Police Department and get those services together. We also need a call center because the problem with us calling in, which I do, when I see a homeless person, they have to stop what they're doing and send an officer. Well, we only have three officers per shift to take care of this. But we're going to figure that out. We're going to have to have a staff resource and some kind of call system that will, we can assess the problem, see what it is. If it's more resources for Tri-City Mental Health, they could go take care of it. And we're trying to get Lakata in on a five days a week, which really helps us out. So we're morphing right now, and our, our staff is doing. I didn't realize what an amazing job we're actually doing. And the whole situation sucks. It just sucks.
What, you know, not that numbers really matter, but what was the last services?
Forty. I think it was, it was triple.
Well, in Mountain Springs, we have.
Cannibals.
People that are coming up through the canyon.
This is the thing about that, that's not allowed. You see them, I've had people call me, if you can't get through the Police Department, get in touch with me. Go through the proper channels first though, because it's important that the department understands. Because the Sheriff's Department went out there, and they cleared out, I don't know how many in Camlins. I have one of my close friends that I used to coach their kids, right in the corner of Alosta and Baseline, a foot and baseline by the Laverne Car Wash, right down that little space on the right side, there were people living there. She says, Tim, I came back from vacation. Within two hours, that was out of there. So the problem is, it fires right now, it's probably not so bad because of the moist, and we're supposed to have rain. If you see them, look for the blue tarps, look for the tan tarps, look for the, just the signs, and especially Sandy Hill's Canyon, as we're so attached to that, you need to call it in, so.
We just had one homeowner that had homeless bathing in his pool, so.
That was me.
Sorry.
Throw him a coaster.
I mean, you know.
Again, it's illegal. It's, we just passed ordinances to tighten up the ordinances, which is, you can't sleep overnight in the parks, it's illegal, 10 o'clock it shuts down. There's no defecation, any drug abuse, you can't sleep on the sidewalks. We have, we have the businesses that have, I know trespassing, we have about 100 businesses sign up. So if you're in front of their place, there's no, you can't, you're out, you can't stay here. You know, so there's, it's just that, until we have a system where we can pull them and put them in a mental situation, a mental safety situation, or get them medical services, which a lot of, most of the stuff isn't medical services, they just need medical attention, and then the drug abuse situation, we just need avenues for that where we can put them in a facility where they can get better, so.
Well, it sounds like you're really working on coordinating.
It is. We, no, beyond that, but we just need, we need full-time employees to do it. Yes, ma'am?
I know Governor Newsom hasn't authorized the care program for LA County, but that there's funds in lieu of to help with the expense. So has the city gone looking for that money post-game?
That was one of the conversations, because it was frustrating me at first that, that we didn't get that in LA County. The problem is, is they just threw it out like a bag of dust and said, here, you figure it out, with really no structure, no money, you know, you figure it out yourself. So Tri-City Mental Health's watching Orange County, because Orange County got it. And quite frankly, they said, it's three or four years out, if at all. So it, it, you know, it was blush, it's just blush. So no, we need to figure out, between the Sangiovese LA Council of Governments, the Sangioval Valley Regional Housing Trust, between LA County, Measure H funds were a total, just, that was just a waste, you know? And now what they're doing is pinpointing the systems that work, like Lakata, it's working, it's working really well. So I think we're fine tuning that with our relationship with the COG and with our city. I think we're going to get some more services and to, to, or to help us to get these.
We've got some money from the federal government under the ARCA program to create those, but what about the state? The state has their own version of that.
We're going after everything that we possibly get our hands on. And Tri-City Mental Health is probably the best advocate because they're running.
They're running for.
Yeah, they're running those dollars, and they do a very good job of it. It's just that, and like I say, the Sangiovese LA Council of Government's been getting money from multiple places, places like the tiny homes and stuff, and they're working. It's working. It really is working, you know? And it's just a process, it's just, it's bad. And the Goldline train, you know, we got to get with Metro, and they're trying some new stuff to get the homeless and the people off that train, because it's a bullet train to homeless, and you can't have that. It won't work. It won't work, you know, so.
Too, too quick, hopefully quick. First one being, the houses that are being built, or whatever they're called.
What are you talking, on fruit?
On fruit. Aesthetically, my personal opinion, they look awful. They look like you're going to walk out of your front door onto fruit. So that's one question. Do you think that that's the future of this town? Because that scares me.
Route 66 corridor.
Those are high though. Those are four-story.
And the last question I have, can you commit somehow to having a, a city forum like this? Maybe once a quarter, where people could come in and do Q and As, where they wouldn't be.
I'll talk to the new city manager.
City common.
Sure.
And have not more than two of you guys, so there could be maybe two council people, maybe we're police chief, whatever.
Well, you got to remember too, that when you're looking at sticks, which is wood, it's pretty blighted. It looks, I drove by and went, no. But every single community I've been in, this is what they're building. This is what people are having. And quite frankly, the people that are going to move there, if you really look through the Laverne, and you come down Emerald, and you look on the right and go, oh, they're just not attached. But they're row houses. I mean, it's just the way they build. This is going to be a tight-knit little community. Right now, yeah, I'll admit it, it looks pretty stark. But again, I'm in construction. Give it some time. Let them get the fascia on, let them get the stucco on, let them get those little front yards. I went, you go through Claremont, you go through Claremont Baseline, you go through Pomona now, that's, that's how they build.
It's the future.
You cannot, you cannot stop and stop.
That's Pomona, that's Claremont, you go down Arrow Highway in Glendora, it's just awful. Is that what, is that what, what our future looks like?
The, the problem, the problem with it is, is like our arena, our, our housing element that we just passed. If you don't have things in place, they can build whatever they want. At least we have some type of control of what we build. The problem is, that's what the builders are building. That's, it's, it's attached homes. I mean, and you think about it, how many years ago did they have detached homes? They were two-story everywhere. It just was laid out a little differently. But now you have a reduced lot size, and you, you know, attach the walls, but.
It's kind of going back to the 1800s.
Well, look at England. It's European, it's a European style. I mean, you go through Europe, I don't care where you go, that's the way they built it. Because they built them right, you know, they're right next to each other, common wall. That common wall is that thick, but you know, just give it some time.
Too many people.
I, from my recollection.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you through that thing.
From my recollection, the, the way that they're building, they're constructing that right now is nothing but the rendering was as it was presented to the city.
It will be. It has to be. It has to be, it will be.
Because they didn't have anything in the front of it, it was supposed to be.
You're looking, you're looking at tin studs, you're looking at studs, wood studs. Just wait, it'll change, believe me. If not, we'll have a beer, whatever. No. It, 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 it has to be. Those renderings, those renderings and those designs are approved, that's what they're going to be. If not, they're going to tear them apart, and they're going to build like they're supposed to be building stuff. Any other questions?
Anybody have any? Sorry, the room's cold.
No, but I liked your last comment about, no, you know, about having.
Yeah, I'll talk to, I'll relay that to, I, I think, here's the deal. We're in a whole different spot now, which is great. And the communication and talk is very good for all of us. I think it's so important.
Oh, yes.
Because before, it was that, like Rick said, stone walls, like, I'm looking at my council going, hey, come on, you know, let's chat a little bit, so.
And you know, it just generates so much anger from the community.
Oh, I know, believe me.
And you know, and that goes nowhere, you know?
No, it doesn't, not now, we need to have all hands on deck now. Because really, we've, we've got a beautiful community, we just need to make sure we try to keep it that way, you know?
Are the firefighters participating in the church's Christmas?
That I can't answer. I think they pulled away from that because of resources, and they were having people that were licensed for the fire trucks or whatever trucks they use. I'll ask Chief Nick, I don't know. I don't know, I'll find out. I'll, I'll find out and let you know. Yeah, yeah. But it's still going on. This morning, it's just a free pack, I will probably get back to packing the peanuts and stuff probably in another year or two, I would imagine. That's a lot of fun. It's just COVID right now is kicking its heels.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody, anybody else?
I have a question about last meeting, we went, I went to a CASI meeting, because I left a little early. So actually, I really want to make sure CASI group, is it like an official group in the city? Or sent as resident group, like LV3C or Bonilla, Bear Mount? Pretty much a big influencer. So I just want to.
At least, it's like at least three. It's not a city committee.